Welcome to Welcome to the 2020 Spring Town Meeting. I'm calling this meeting to order. My name is Donna Kabibbo and I'm your town moderator. I want to thank you very much for electing me just last week.[47.12][47.12](APPLAUSE) I declare that the warrant has been duly posted, published, and that the reading of the warrant is hereby waived. I now ask that you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Because these are extraordinary times, I will strive to keep tonight's meeting succinct, and to that end, my opening remarks will be brief. I want to congratulate all of those newly-elected town officials and send a thank you out to those whose service has ended, and thank you to everyone who engaged in the process. The community thrives because of our democratic participation. We have all worked hard in the town to put in place a safe environment for us to conduct tonight's business, and I want to express my appreciation to the town and school employees, as well as local cable for their help with this process. We would not have made it here without their help and commitment. And now I just have a few announcements made related to those safeguards. Please do not move your seat or move from your assigned seat. To speak to a motion, please stand up and wait to be recognized, and at that point you should move towards the microphone. Please keep your mask on when speaking. The microphone will be disinfected between each use. When the meeting is concluded, I will be releasing you row by row, and I will start to my right, and we will exit out through the door and out through the front door of the school, and we ask that you not linger in the parking lot after the meeting. If you need to leave the meeting before it's over, please use the exit door here and exit out the front door. You'll see the signs and you should follow them. If you're in need of assistance during the meeting, please raise your hand. The constable will come and assist you. The bathrooms are in the hall outside the gym. They are single-use. Please take advantage of the hand sanitizer provided. I want to thank you all for coming out tonight to take care of the business of the town. We are here to consider the 17 articles presented on the warrant. I would like to introduce the town officials and committee members. I'm a little bit nervous, so I'm sorry if I stumble here and there. Behind me on the bleachers tonight, from my right, we've got Erin Underhill, Select Board, Peter Jermaine, Select Board, and Jim McCaffrey, Select Board. And we have our town clerk, Lisa Jane Harden, Assistant Town Clerk Kathy Smith, our Finance Director Carol Johnson, Johnston, excuse me, our Town Administrator Mike Kaczynski, and our Town Council, Jay Tellerman. The Finance Committee reviews all articles and budget proposals and presents their recommendations to you. The moderator is an independent official who presides over the town meeting to ensure a fair and open consideration of the warrant articles. Your role here tonight is to consider the articles, debate them, and decide how to deal with the articles for consideration through voting. You, as the town meeting members, are the decision-makers. I'd like to take a moment to talk about the procedures for tonight. We will consider the articles in the order in which they are presented in the warrant. It is possible to advance the consideration of an article by majority vote, though I urge you to stay for the entirety of the meeting, as all articles are important. Articles are presented through a main motion by the Finance Committee and then seconded. A Finance Committee member will describe the recommendations and the reasons. The proponent of the article will then speak to the article if desired, and debate will follow in the form of statements, questions by other town meeting members. All town meeting members, registered Millis voters present tonight, are eligible to address the town meeting on an article. In order to be recognized when you'd like to speak to an article, please rise, and you will be recognized, and at that point you will proceed to the microphone. When you are recognized at the microphone, please state your name and address for the record, and then please address all comments through the moderator. There should be no personal exchanges. Please be civil and respectful. Please be considerate and allow the opportunity for those that wish to speak on an article the chance to do so. Please remember that only comments in order are those directed to the article currently under consideration. And also, please note that applause, boos, or any such outbursts are discouraged. Amendments can be made to a main motion and can be made at any time during debate. This must be in the form of a motion to amend and must be seconded. When discussion is completed, the motion to amend is voted upon. Once the amendment is decided, we return to the main motion. Note, multiple amendments may be considered, but only one at a time. Once debate is over, a vote will be taken. All votes are initially by voice vote, but if the vote is unclear, then I will call for a standing count. Majority vote is typically required on any motion, though certain articles require two-thirds or four-fifths votes, and I will notify you of such motions. Special motions. Motion to reconsider. It is possible for someone to move to reconsider a previously decided-upon article at the end of the meeting only after all articles on the warrant have been dealt with. Motion to move the question. This is a motion to end debate on any issue. If this motion is seconded, it will be voted on. This requires a two-thirds vote, and if passed, debate on the original emotion ends and the meeting must vote on the main motion. Please use this respectfully and with consideration for others who wish to speak on an article. Motion to adjourn. To end the meeting after all articles have been dealt with, the moderator will accept a motion to adjourn, which requires a second and a majority vote. Those are the major rules that we're going to follow tonight. Last, in order to ensure that everybody that wants to has an opportunity to speak, I would like to request that the town meeting vote unanimously to consent to limit the speaking time to two minutes per trip up to the microphone. I'd like to do this tonight to ensure everyone can have the opportunity to make a succinct point or statement about any issue that is presented. If you are in favor of limiting the time at the microphone to two minutes per speaker, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Again, I thank you all for being here. I appreciate your patience as we complete the town's business tonight. Now I call upon the Chair of the Finance Committee, Judy Garzon, to address you regarding their deliberations. The Finance Committee members will be moving up and down the bleachers to those microphones, and so do have patience with the time that it takes people to move back and forth.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm Judy Garzon, Chair of the Finance Committee. With me here tonight are other members Peter Berubi, Sean Power, Doug Riley, Craig Schultz, and Katie Chu. Additional members Joyce Boyarty, Kathy McGinnis, and Jim Borgman were unable to join us tonight. Our administrative assistant is Deirdre Gilman, who keeps us organized and running efficiently every week. Without her help, we would be completely lost, so I thank her for all her help this year in getting us ready for town meeting tonight during these unusual circumstances. As we consider these articles tonight, I'd like to note that there's still a lot that is unknown about our revenue picture for fiscal year 2021. We don't know what will be the long-term effects of the current downturn, both to our local, state, and federal budgets. Many members of our committee, as well as other committees here in town, are concerned that we will need to make further cuts to our budgets in fiscal year 21 due to declining revenues. At this point, we've done our best to make decisions based on an uncertain future and make recommendations in the most responsible way we can. We will certainly know more come our November town meeting. While this year's town meeting may be conducted a bit differently than before, we appreciate that you have joined us to make these important decisions as a town. We ask for your careful consideration of every article here and encourage you to ask questions, so we can consider every article presented and collectively make the best choices for our town as we move forward together. Thank you for your attendance here tonight.
Now we will move on to the articles. Miss Judy, would you like to introduce the
Sorry, I can't hear you.
Would you like to introduce the committee?
I already did.
Oh, sorry. You see, this is where I'm beginning to lose it a little. Okay. So at this point, we will move on to the articles.
Madam Moderator.
Ms. Garzon.
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $901.70 and transfer from the sewer enterprise reserves the sum of $154.62 to pay the following unpaid bills incurred by town departments from the previous fiscal year. From the DPW general fund, $204.48 for Millis Police Detail. From the DPW general fund, $223.60 for Millis Police Detail. From the DPW general fund, $473.62 to the Town of Millis. From the DPW Sewer Enterprise, $154.62 for Power Up Generator. This vote requires a four-fifths vote.
The motion has been moved and seconded to approve Article 1 as stated in the warrant. Any discussion?
Madam Moderator.
Ms. Garzon.
This is an annual article to fund bills incurred in previous fiscal years that have remained unpaid. The Finance Committee recommends approval of this article.
Any further discussion on the article? Okay, this does require four-fifths vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries unanimously. Ms. Garzon.
Madam Moderator.
Ms. Garzon, I need to move towards the microphone.
I move that the town vote to dismiss Article 2.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded to dismiss Article 2. Discussion?
Madam Moderator.
Ms. Garzon.
This article was inserted in case we needed additional funds to support fiscal year 2020 expenses. The town was able to fund its expenses through interdepartmental transfers, therefore this article was not needed. The Finance Committee recommends dismissal of this article.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of dismissing Article 2, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Garzon.
Madam Moderator.
I'll get this down.
It's all right. We'll get there. I move that the town vote to fix the compensation of elected officers, provide for a reserve fund, and to raise and appropriate, including appropriations from taxation by transfer from available funds, the sum of $35,183,151, to defray charges and expenses to the town, including debt and interest, and a reserve fund for the general fund for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020, as outlined in Table 2 of the Finance Committee report with the following revenue sources. From taxation, $34,81541. From the ambulance fund, $286,438. From perpetual care interest, $332. From the sale of cemetery lots, $7,070. From cell tower revenue, $54,136. From bond premium release, $139,464. And to authorize the following transfers. Sewer fund indirect cost to general fund, $213,749. From water fund indirect cost to general fund, $271,248. From stormwater fund indirect cost to general fund, $139,173.
It has been moved and seconded to approve Article 3 as stated in the warrant. Discussion?
Madam Moderator.
Ms. Garzon.
This article will fund the fiscal year 2021 operating budgets of the town. Although we are not unanimous in our recommendation for this budget, as some believe we should be undertaking additional cuts for fiscal year 21 as we anticipate reduced revenues next year, by majority vote, our committee's recommendation to town meeting is to approve this article.
Actually, I will go through the line, line item by line item, and if you have a question, please raise your hand, and we'll make a note, and we will circle back around for discussion on that line once we've read through it. So we're starting with general government. Millis Public Schools, $16,215,827.53. Culture and Recre-- oh, sorry. Health and Human Services, $308,954.31. Culture and Rec-- is that a hand? Exactly, but that was on number five, correct? Line five? Line seven, Culture and Recreation, $470,379.42. And debt service, $3,893,523.38, for a total of $35,183,150.27. I believe there was a hold on the line for Public Works. Would anybody like to speak to that? Please proceed to the microphone.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Brutus Cantoreggi, 7 Blueberry Lane. The question I have, first question is, how much money is going to the reserve fund this year? It wasn't in the book.
Mr. McCaffrey.
Look at, it's under the general government line item. It's the third, up from the bottom, reserve fund appropriation of $50,000.
Madam Moderator, what is the town's reserve fund right now, total?
Sorry, I couldn't hear that.
I'm sorry. Can you speak up, please?
What is the current balance of the reserve fund presently, right now?
Are you, do you mean the stabilization fund or the reserve fund?
Stabilization fund? Sure.
So the stabilization fund has over $2 million in it, but Carol Johnston can probably speak more clearly to that.
Currently, there is a balance of $1,790-- oh, sorry. It's Carol Johnston and the Finance Director. Currently, we have a balance of $1,797,138 in the stabilization fund.
Madam Moderator, maybe someone could explain, I understand how it works for the folks at home, what exactly the stabilization fund is used for.
Ms. Garzon.
So we do have a trusty glossary here in the back, where the stabilization fund is used for unusual and emergency purposes. At this point, in this budget, there is not a transfer from stabilization fund.
Correct. I would like to modify the budget that we move $60,000 from the stabilization fund to the public works expense line item to be specifically for the removal of dead trees throughout our town. If the folks at home don't know on the tree warden for the last 19 years--
Excuse me. There's a motion. Do we have a second? It's been seconded. A motion has been made and seconded to amend the general government line and move $60,000 to the public works budget to remove dead trees. Further discussion?
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. I'd like to recognize the Select Board, that last year, they did appropriate $50,000, and we were able to move close to 400 trees throughout town. There's been an ongoing issue in town. I think folks, as they drive around town, they notice that we've had to deal with, obviously, the drought of three years ago, shifting mothens, fesation, and also Asian longhorn beetle has taken out a lot of, not Asian longhorn, ash-bore beetle, I'm sorry, has taken out numerous trees in town. What I presented to the selectmen last year was the fact that we had a window of opportunity because we had like a year to get these trees down. Well, it's been almost nine months. We still have a lot of trees out there, particularly in the area of Bird Street, Forest Street, Dover Road, Middlesex, Orchard Street, Ridge Street. These are large trees that can cause a lot of damage. The reason I'm asking for this money now is so it can be planned and it can be removed like we did. If we don't, if we call in for emergency work, it's very, very expensive. It's going to cost the town exponential amount of funds to have these trees removed, one at a time. Additionally, going through this process, we were able to contract out, and we, I think folks know we moved a lot of trees. So that's why I think it's important. Thank you, Ms. Madam Moderator.
I'm going to ask our Town Council to address the meeting.
Brutus, the motion itself is legal, but there's two elements to it that have to be, one that has to be noted and one that has to be corrected. If you want to move money from stabilization as an additional source for the budget for an item that's in DPW, you can only be to DPW as a whole, that part of the budget. It cannot be to a specific line item because the town doesn't break their line items into that fine detail. It's just more a general category. So then it could be used anywhere in DPW, but obviously you can state what your intention is, but it wouldn't necessarily be required to go for that purpose. That would have to be a separate warrant article if you were doing that, and obviously that can't be done. The second element is that if you add, use stabilization to fund even a little part of the omnibus budget, it's going to convert the vote for the entire budget to a two-thirds vote. So just those things for the record, if that's what you want to do to keep proceeding. The other way to go about this would be for the next town meeting to have a dedicated warrant article that would be just to capture that purpose.
Thank you. Madam Moderator? May I respond?
So you're not moving it from stabilization, just from general government? Is that the motion?
Yes.
Okay. So that doesn't convert it to a two-thirds, but it just, from big line item to big line item. So can't be, again, that targeted.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Cantoreggi.
I just want to explain the reason why I did specifically for that, is because I look at this as a one-time expense, not a reoccurring expense. I also wanted to earmark it, per se, and on the record at town meeting, that's the intent of the money for where it is to go. For trees specifically. But I understand what Town Council's saying.
So your intention with this motion is to move $60,000 from line 1 general government into the public service, the DPW--
Public Works.
--budget.
Correct.
Any further discussion on this amendment?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. McCaffrey.
Thank you very much. I'd just like to make it clear to the folks here tonight that certainly the Select Board believes that the tree removal is an important priority. We also have a number of other important priorities. We're always trying to balance one priority against another. I think the board took the position, when Mr. Cantoreggi presented to the board, that we would take a serious look at this in the fall after the free cash is certified, which would enable us to fund some additional tree removal. But the stakes here are, this is a priority, but it is, in our view, a priority that has less priority than the ones that we presented to you. I don't want anyone to think that this issue was not raised with the board, because it was, and Mr. Cantoreggi gave us a very good presentation, as he did last year. So I would urge you to vote no on this amendment, so that we can move forward with the budget
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Cantoreggi.
As the tree warden, I need to stress the danger of these trees coming down. I need to stress the town's liability of these trees coming down. These trees are now identified as hazard. If a tree falls, injures somebody, a vehicle, the town is going to be liable. It is my job to bring up to town meeting. I strongly urge that people vote for this. There, you drive around town, it's awful, these trees, that we've lost so many significant trees in town, but they are now a hazard. I feel town fall meeting is too late, and then we're going to have to deal with it then, and then we still have to get contractors in. It's another six months. It's a window that we should not wait for. It should be done now. I'm sure it would get voted in the fall. It's stabilization, it's one-time reoccurring, not reoccurring. So I strongly urge everybody to vote for this.
Thank you. So the motion on the floor is to move $60,000--
Madam Moderator?
I'm sorry.
Mark Conroy, 12 Rosenfeld Road. I just need to clarify, because I've heard three things in the last, I believe the original motion was from stabilization. When he said the motion, he said stabilization. Then it was a budget line item, and then as he just left, it was stabilization again. Is the intention of this to be one-time purchase out of the stabilization fund or a transfer from the budget, within the budget line? Because those are two different things.
Okay, the motion as stated was to move $60,000 from general government line to the public, to the DPW line. That is how the motion is, so we're not, the stabilization fund is not part of this discussion on this amendment.
Because that's different than how it was--
Mr. Schultz.
Thank you. Is this mic on?
You need to speak up, please.
I don't know if your mic is on.
These mics aren't working down here.
They don't have.
Oh, it is? Okay. There we go. All right. If the motion is to move from line 1 to the DPW line, my concern with that is, I don't know where we would take it out of line 1 as a town. We're already imposing a 10% cut on town hall staff as part of this budget on salary due to the COVID.
Excuse me. Mr. Schultz, could you please make sure you're directing yourself to, you're fading in and out of the microphone?
So we're already making a 10% cut to town hall staff in hours and salary right now. So if we take it out of line 1 of the general budget, I'm not sure where that money would come from, except deeper cuts to town hall staff, because we can't do it through the reserve fund, because every year we spin that down to almost zero for unexpected emergencies. This year, it's hovering around zero on the reserve fund. So really, there's not many items left in town hall to take it from. While I don't disagree that it's a need, I think it's a need that would be better addressed through the use of stabilization funds at a future date. I understand the urgency that Brutus is speaking of, but I also don't know that it's affordable. I don't believe it's affordable this year. I'd vote, I'd suggest voting no on this article amendment.
Mr. Cantoreggi, from here forward, please stand and wait to be recognized before moving.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair. So I'm actually confused now. So, and I guess it goes to Town Council. What I was asking for is to take $60,000 from the stabilization fund, and that goes into the operating budget at the line 1 item, and then it can be distributed how it wants to be. But the money is coming out of the stabilization fund. It's not going to affect town employees. Is that correct, or no? That was my intent. I do not want to get into who's more valuable or anything like that. I just want to take money from the stabilization fund and put into the operating budget as an emergency, why it's supposed to be there.
Brutus, it's your motion, so if you want it to come from stabilization, and you have a second, if you could just clarify that, and then the discussion can-- have a second, if you could just clarify that, and then the discussion can center around that. It will, however, if you move it to stabilization, turn the entire budget into a two-thirds vote?
That's fine. I don't mind two-thirds vote. All I'm asking for, my motion is to move $60,000 from the stabilization fund into Line One or whatever it is, the general budget, that you guys can put wherever else, as I said at town meeting, I would like it to go to trees, because that's why I'm here, not to be disingenuous. So that does not affect the budget at all. It's just taking $60,000 as defined as an emergency, which I feel it's an emergency, and hopefully others do too, at $60,000 for trees. That's what I want to do.
So the motion as it is on the floor is to move $60,000 from the stabilization fund into Line Two, the Public Works budget?
Correct.
Do I have a second? Any further discussion?
Madam Moderator? Point of clarification, I can't hear you, was it Line, what line are we putting it into?
Putting it into the, I'm sorry, did I say the Public Works budget? Yes.
That would be Line Five, correct?
Line Five, the Public Works budget.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Scott, you're the 411 Union.
You need to speak-
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Scott, you're the 411 Union. If these trees are a hazard, you know, they should, the DPW and maybe the tree warden can go look at the worst trees that are really hazardous and take a few down, and then maybe next year or in the fall, we can take the rest of them down, but take the ones that are worst down right now, so they're not public safety issues, so, thank you.
Madam Moderator?
Ellen Horton, 10 Hemlock Circle. I just want to clarify that if we do move the 60 from stabilization into the Public Works, there's no guarantee it's going to the trees. So we could vote to do that, and it could, the trees could still be a problem. Right? Because they could do whatever they want.
As Town Council noted, we cannot move it to a specific project just into the budget.
Right. So we still might end up with all these trees.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Schultz.
Now that I'm clear that we're talking about stabilization, we have been very careful not to touch stabilization this year for obvious reasons. We think we might need extra money next year as, to fund schools, to fund other programs that the town needs, police, fire, DPW. We have purposely not touched stabilization to make this budget whole, we made cuts to avoid going into stabilization, because we're fairly confident we're going to need to look at that next year at some point, so that we have to make dramatic cuts to our town budget. Secondly, stabilization has to be held at about 5% of our, of our total free cash. This will move us very close to that 5% level, we're above it now. And thirdly, any money we take out of the stabilization needs to be paid back within three years, that's part of our town policy. And for those three reasons, mostly because I'm convinced we're going to need stabilization next year just to maintain town services, not to do anything beyond that. Anyway, that's my thought, and I'd still urge voting no on this. I think it is a reasonable consideration as we get into the free cash money that's going to come in next year, but at this point, I understand that there is an urgency, but I don't think that we can afford it.
Any further discussion on the motion to amend? Mr. Cantoregui.
Since we're, Madam Moderator, since we're talking finance and stuff, is there an estimate on new growth this year?
Carol Johnston, Finance Director. I'm sorry, sir, I didn't hear the question. Would you mind repeating it?
I'm just, you know, we get into all this stuff about financing, paying back, stabilization fund, I'm wondering what our new growth numbers are, estimate, what you feel they are right now, going forward, because, you know what, we got a whole lot of new houses in town, we got the regency, there's a whole new tax money that's going to come in. So there's new growth coming, I think, and that's what we all wanted, and that's what we voted for, and $60,000 is a nominal fee to take care of the safety of our residents and people traveling into town for trees. So I'm just curious what that number might be.
The new growth is on track. I wouldn't say that it's much greater than what we had anticipated, we'll have to wait for the numbers to actually come in. The assessor is working hard to get the new growth information in the system, and we'll know, we'll get the certification from the state probably in September. As far as that $60,000, my personal opinion would be, maybe asked for in the fall, after free cash is certified.
So, Madam Moderator? So what is the, just folks at home, what is our estimated new growth this year? What's our plan? You said there was a plan, it's on track, what is the track?
So please use the microphone.
The new growth in this particular budget is $698,000, but as you know, there are other expenses within the town that grow as part of contract negotiations and the rest of that, so it's not like you can just pick a number and decide that that's going to meet your need for the coming year. So I think, again, my personal opinion would be for this tree work to wait until the fall town meeting, when free cash is certified, we know what the number is, and we can move on it then.
But I will say to you, Madam Moderator, I'm sorry, I will say that $600,000 of new growth, which is above beyond the two and a half that the town is allowed to levy, $600,000 is 5% roughly of our $32, $33 million budget. That's a substantial amount of money, it's new growth that's coming into town.
We're now hit the two-minute mark for your stint at the microphone.
Madam Moderator? If I may, the issue here is the decision by the folks in this room as to whether at this point in time, you want to utilize a portion of your stabilization fund, the fund that is there to weather the storms, particularly this year, on this worthy project. It's a worthy project. We could list a dozen other worthy projects. Why don't we spend another $60,000 on roads? Roads are pretty hazardous in this town, we'd love to do that. I urge this town meeting to vote no on this amendment, because at this point in time, I think it is bad for us as a town to start tipping into our stabilization fund until we've looked at the integrated situation altogether. If we do it in the fall, we will have a much better idea about how much money we have. And I urge you to vote no on this amendment.
Any further discussion on the amendment? Okay, we're going to move the vote, to vote on the amendment to move $60,000 from the stabilization fund to Line Five of the Public Works budget. All those in favor of this amendment, please say aye. All those opposed?
No.
Motion does not carry, so we are back to the main motion on the floor of Article Three for an operating budget of $35,183, $183,150, oh my God, sorry, hold on. Any further discussion on the main motion?
Sarah Lang, Windcrest Lane. So the $34 million that's coming from taxes, is that existing revenue that we have, or is that, does that require an increase in taxes?
Madam Moderator?
Mr. McCaffrey.
The dollar amount is a projection as to what we expect to collect over the next fiscal year, based upon some pretty stringent rules and regulations that the Department of Revenue puts upon the cities and towns. Just as an example of a little bit of the straitjacket, we will generate in this fiscal year probably close to $300,000 in revenue from the marijuana, retail marijuana establishment. That's a half a year's revenue, even though the place was closed for a month and a half. Under the rules of the Department of Revenue, we are not allowed to take that money into account as a projected revenue until free cash is certified. So these are just examples of the restrictions that we operate under. We can't just make a wild guess as to where we think this might go. There's always risk. There's always risk that the new growth won't come in as quickly as we think it might, or that the revenue from this particular need might not come in as quickly as we'd like. So to answer your question, this is our best estimate based upon some significant methodology restrictions that we have pursuant to state regulation.
May I ask another question?
Sorry. Yes, you may. Please direct your question to the moderator, though.
Madam Moderator. If there is a tax increase required, is that something that comes before a town meeting, or is that a decision that's made elsewhere?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
Can you repeat your question, please?
If there is a tax increase required, is that a decision made at a town meeting, or is that made by administration?
No, there's never a tax, there's no money levied or spent without town meeting approval.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the main motion?
Hello, I'm new in town. Art Curly, 148 Clonell Boulevard. I came all the way from Holliston and here six months. Madam Moderator, I just got a couple of questions. What are the real estate tax delinquencies to date in dollars?
I'm sorry, sir, could you-
What are the, what are the real estate tax delinquencies to date in dollars?
We don't have an exact, Madam Moderator, I'm sorry.
Mr. McCaffrey. Ms. Johnson.
Excuse me, sir, please repeat that.
Yes, I'd like to know the real estate tax delinquencies to date in dollars. What's the, what's-
Right now, I believe we're at-
What's the shortfall, in other words?
I think we're at 98% of collections for 2020 at this point in time, so I would expect that those would be paid in the, in the next coming month. We did give people a one-month delay because of COVID-19, but we see strong collections.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Next question. Are the Selectmen paid? In my town, they weren't, I'm just curious. And how much do they make a year?
Mr. McCaffrey.
Madam Moderator, after 12 years of glorious service as the Chair, I get $400.
$400?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I saw a line on him in the budget for Selectmen.
And my colleagues get 200 each.
Very good, thank you. Next question.
Clearly, we're in it for the money.
Yeah, I know, I feel your pain. Who's responsible for the town budget? Is there a single person, a town manager?
Sir, you really need to speak up and into the microphone.
Who's responsible for the town budget? Who in the Town Hall is responsible? Is it a single person, a town manager?
Are you talking about the creation of the budget?
No, the $35 million budget, who, who is responsible for it? Who oversees it? The Selectmen?
Madam Moderator?
Mr. McCaffrey.
The policymaking bodies are twofold. One is the School Committee, which is responsible for the school budget, and the other is the Select Board, which is responsible for the municipal budget. Each of those entities has a professional manager in place in charge of the day-to-day operation, the school superintendent, and the town administrator, in the case of the municipal side.
All right, let me ask you-
Just let me finish, there are department heads who are also accountable and responsible for each element of their own budget, and that information is information that's available to anybody in the town who wants to get the information, and we are, our goal is to make it even more broadly distributed through the application of the ClearGov software, which will enable us to not only measure the income and the expenditures, but able to actually track expenditures by pay period, for example. That's something that we hope to get accomplished this year.
Thank you. How can you have growth?
Sir, please direct your-
Yes, Madam Moderator. How can you have growth in a $35 million budget if all your contracts are fixed price?
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Schultz.
There are contractual items that do grow in there, the typical union wage increases of less than 4% in most cases.
But that is known every year.
Sir, please direct your-
Right, and those are known, and that is factored into it. I'm not sure what the question is, the reason it grows year to year is the, the main driver of that is salary increases because of contractual wages.
That's not my question, Madam Moderator, my question is, you talked about growth. How can you have growth if everything's fixed price?
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Schultz.
I believe that you're referring to the previous question, the comment about new growth, is that what you're talking about?
No, I'm talking, I'm talking about the town budget. How can you have growth in a town budget if everything's fixed cost? All the employees, everything you do is fixed cost. There's no variables.
Excuse me, sir, excuse me, sir, please direct your comments to the moderator, and your two minutes at the microphone are over, so please take your seat. Mr. Schultz, do you wish to-
The budget grows each year by a known amount. Typically, the biggest driver of that is salaries, which are contractually obligated, so we know what they will be. The other growth is for new initiatives or projects that may wish, that town may wish to undertake. This year, there are very, very few of those in this budget, and in fact, there's a cutback in some areas. So the reason the budget goes from, from $34,709,000 in FY '20 to $35,183,000 this year is almost solely due to contractual wage increases.
Okay, my final question.
Sir, your two minutes of the microphone have expired, please take a seat.
My final question?
Please take a seat.
One more question.
Please take a seat, sir.
My final question would be-
Sir, please take your seat.
Why aren't we cutting the budget 15 to 3% now?
Sir, you've been asked repeatedly to please take your seat. Thank you.
I want him to have my two minutes. I have two minutes.
And please wait till you are, can you, please wait till you are, sir, please wait till you are, stand, and please wait till you are recognized. Thank you.
Mike McPolan, 117 Forest Road.
Please speak into the microphone.
Mike McPolan, 117 Forest Road. I want to give this gentleman two minutes of my time. Thank you.
Okay, Madam Moderator, I don't mean to cause you grief here tonight, but why aren't we cutting the budget now if we know in six months we're going to lose 15 to 20% of our dollars from the state and everybody else? Tax delinquencies, I mean, why, why are we going to go and crash in November? Why don't we do it now?
Excuse me. Mr. Schultz.
Madam Moderator, we don't know anything from the state right now, we've heard-
Everybody in the state knows it.
Excuse me, sir, please let Mr. Schultz finish his comments.
Every year, we get official information from the state. That official information this year has been anything from a 10% cut across all of state aid, and if that's the case, that would be a $600,000 cut to the budget. There is also, other people have been saying that there'll be a 10% cut to local assistance, and that would be about a $100,000 cut to the budget. Others have said that school aid will be left alone, so that's the difference between those two numbers. We don't know anything yet at this point. This budget is built on a 5% cut in local aid from the state, so we are reducing this budget in the school side and the municipal side by-
Jody, do you remember the number?
By 5% of the state aid number, state aid $6 million, probably about $3.50,000. So that's from, if the state would fund us at the full amount. We'll wait and see what happens in November, because I don't think that anybody is in a position to start making cuts until we know what federal aid might be, official state aid might be, and what other eventualities occur with, with funding. Tax revenue is fine, and that's our largest number. Local receipts, we don't have anything much in the restaurant world, or the industry world, or the commercial world, which usually is a huge unfortunate thing for Millis, but in this year, it's great because we're not having a huge drop in commercial real estate revenue as other towns have had. I wish we had it, but we don't have it, so it hasn't hit us. So right now, the Selectmen have- So, right now, the selectmen have produced a budget. It's a 5% cut in state aid, and that's spread over the town and the school. That's, we believe, a safe and prudent budget to start with, and if it's, it's worse than that, we will have to revisit it in November. But if it's not worse than that, we don't want to start making cuts now to close programs that we cannot restart, um, in November if the issue isn't as severe as we think it is, or as some think it is.
Okay, sir, we have--
Thank, thank you.
We have indulged you to this point, but we'd really like to get back to discussing the actual budget.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the act, the budget article as presented? All those in favor of approving the budget article as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries unanimously. We'll move on to Article Four.
Is this working? Is this mic working? Can you hear it? Yeah, there it is. There it goes.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Riley.
I moved at the town vote to raise and appropriate from sewer department receipts the following sums to operate the Sewer Enterprise Fund beginning July 1st, 2020. Salaries and wages, $266,150. Expenses, $1,154,095, for a total of $1,424,245.
Second. The motion has moved, been moved and seconded to approve Article Four as stated in the warrant. Discussion?
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Riley.
Uh, this is our Sewer Enterprise Fund budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2020.
Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor of Article Four as stated, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Carries unanimously.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Riley.
I moved at the town vote to raise and appropriate from water department receipts the following sums to operate the Water Enterprise Fund beginning July 1st, 2020. Salaries and wages, $386,178. Expenses, $1,302,763, for a total of $1,688,941.
The motion has been moved and seconded to approve Article Five as presented. Discussion?
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Riley.
This, uh, sets the Water Enterprise Fund budget for the year beginning July 1st, 2020.
Any further discussion on Article Five? Sir?
Stan Yblonsky, Glen Ellen Boulevard. These numbers that are being thrown out now, are they anywhere in this literature?
It should be in--
I can't find them.
They're, they're not printed in the, uh--
They're not printed in the warrant?
I don't see them. Correct me if I'm wrong.
When the article is printed, the finance committee does not necessarily have, that information is not available. That's why it's being presented as a motion tonight.
Okay, can I make a recommendation for future town meetings that any monies that are not shown in here be made available via a handout as we come in, so we can look at what you're looking out, what you're looking at, and we can mull it over before we take a vote? That, I would appreciate that, and maybe the other taxpayers would also. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article Five as presented? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries unanimously.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Riley.
I moved at the town vote to raise and appropriate from stormwater department receipts the following sums to operate the Stormwater Enterprise Fund beginning July 1st, 2020. Salaries and wages, $175,656. Expenses, $382,214, for a total of $557,870.
Second. It has been moved and seconded-- Sorry, excuse me. It has been moved and seconded to approve Article Six as presented. Discussion?
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Riley.
This is our third and final enterprise fund budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020. This is the Stormwater, uh, Stormwater Fund.
Any further discussion on Article Six?
Jim Angelo, 34 Lavender Street, Millis.
Mr. Angelo, please speak up and into the mic.
Jim Angelo, 34 Lavender Street. Can, um, we get an explanation of exactly our breakdown of what the $325,000 was used on in this past year? I mean, what are we actually doing with this money?
Well, I, I'll take an initial stab if anybody else wants to--
Well, I'm, I want to know, basically, I want to know how much was spent on paving, how much was spent on sweeping, how much, I mean, we were supposed to be doing all these big projects to get rid of potassium. I don't see any of the, a lot of this stuff going on. Can, can we be explained exactly where the money's going?
Mr. Riley.
I'll, I'll just take an initial stab is that that budget is set so that we can comply with state regulations for maintaining, uh, catch basin cleaning and street sweeping and various other, uh, regulatory requirements. I don't have in front of me details on the exact dollar cost of street sweeping versus basin cleaning versus other activities.
Well, that's my question. How much is--
Excuse me, excuse me. This is Johnson.
Hi, Carol Johnson, Finance Director. All of the budget information is online, that you can see all of the line item breakout for each one of these enterprise systems, as well as all the other departments within the town. The breakout that is currently for the Stormwater, there is engineering services, $74,000. Inspections are $23,000. Higher help is $24,000, which at, at the end of the day adds up to the numbers that you're looking at, or that you can look at if you go online and see these. Unfortunately, the, um, enterprise systems were not included in the finance, um, mail out. Every other year it has been. I'm not sure what the oversight was.
Um, Jim Angelo, 34 Lavender Street, Mrs. Moderator. Not everybody's online, so we can't all check it. My, my question is, you're saying $325,000 in expenses. What are the expenses? I mean, is it $50,000 for street sweeping? Are we paving roads with this money? What are we using this money for?
I believe the, um, Director of the Public Works is in the audience this evening. If he would like to address that, to give you specifics.
We were sold this bag of goods, because it was to clean up all the potassium in the water and all this stuff. My, my exact question is, where are all these big projects? I mean, I've seen road paving, but I haven't seen, like, massive drainage projects going on.
I, I know the Director of the DPW is in the audience, if he'd like to address that.
James McKay, Director of Public Works, 416 Village Street. There is no paving that is done under the Stormwater Management at all. Not, no paving comes under that. If there is catch basins that need to be repaired while the paving project goes on, we do use some funds for that. Last year, we made many repairs to culverts that's in the, in the book, uh, the annual book that's published. The report that's filed once a year with all the work that's done under the Stormwater Management is going to be signed tomorrow by the Chair of the Board of Selectmen, and that is put online, and there's a copy always at the DPW office outside of Room 204.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article Six as presented?
Stuff you do, 411 Union Street. If anyone in town is, the street sweep has been out a lot. They're going up and down every neighborhood. Uh, you know, they're doing the, the street sweep has been out almost every day, uh, going all the way up and down the streets. So, in the defense of the DPW, they're out there, they're doing their job, and they're out there, and they're keep, keeping the streets clean and stuff, so thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, so, all those in favor of Article Six as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries unanimously. Okay, we're moving on to Article Seven, and we're doing something a little different to save some time tonight, and the following have been, we've taken the set of articles and put them into what we consider, call a consent agenda. So, in order to expedite the consideration of these items, I will be reading them by line item, and if anybody has an objection, they need to rise and say, hold. We need seven members to put a hold and move them out of the consent agenda. So, the consent agenda items are, number one, amendments to the personnel plan. Number two, Board of Health Appointing Authority. Number three, revolving funds. Number four, community preservation funds. Madam Moderator, Ms. Two?
I move that the town vote to approve the items as written in Consent Article Seven.
It's been moved and seconded--
Second.
Sorry, excuse me. I jumped the gun. It has been moved and seconded to approve the Consent Article, number seven, as presented. Any discussion? Madam Moderator? Sorry, excuse me, no discussion.
Madam Moderator?
Ms. T, Two, sorry.
Amendments to the Personnel Plan, first article of the Consent Article. This article amends the Personnel Plan. It includes a 2.5% increase to salaries and stipends that are consistent with collective bargaining agreements, as well as adjustments to meet minimum wage requirements for certain positions. It also makes adjustments to building department inspection stipends. Number two, Board of Health Appointing Authority. This annual article authorizes the Board of Health to appoint any of its members to another town office or position for which it has appointing authority. Number three, revolving funds. This annual article authorizes departments to use revolving funds that have their own sources of revenue to be accounted for separately from other town monies. These departments may spend their revenues without additional appropriation up to the limits authorized by the town. This year, the article includes two new revolving funds, School Food Service Fund and School Transportation Fund. Number four, Community Preservation Fund. This annual article allocates community preservation funds into the various reserves as required in the Community Preservation Act for administrative expenses, community preserv, preservation projects, and/or other expenses in fiscal year 2021. The Finance Committee recommends approval of this article.
Okay. Okay, we're going to take a vote on the article. All those in favor of the Consent Article, number seven, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries unanimously.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Schultz. Oh, no, I'm sorry. I am sorry. Mr. Berube.
Thank you. I moved at the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $36,500 for an independent audit of all accounts of all departments of the town.
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded to approve Article Eight as presented. Discussion?
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Berube.
This article will fund a routine, independent audit of all accounts for all departments. The Finance Committee recommends approval of this article.
Any further discussion on Article Eight? All those in favor of Article Eight, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Berube.
I moved at the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $40,000, transfer from free cash the sum of $168,512, transfer from the Water Enterprise Fund, fund the sum of $258,254, and transfer from the Sewer Enterprise Fund the sum of $18,334, for a total sum of $485,100 to fund the capital items as listed in the warrant. Those are, from the School Department, committed bus leases in the amount of $89,999. From the School Department, committed computer leases for $46,600. From the Police Department, committed police cruiser leases in the amount of $31,913. From the Police Department, crosswalk signals in the amount of $40,000. From the Water Enterprise Fund, drinking water risk resilience assessment in the amount of $40,000. From the Water Enterprise Fund, water tanks asset management program for $199,921. From the Water and Sewer Enterprise Funds, radio communication system for DPW vehicles in the amount of $36,667, for a total of $485,100.
Second.
Article Nine has been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Berube.
The Capital Finance Committee reviewed department requests for capital purchases and projects, and then made its recommendation to the Select Board and Finance Committees. Candidate projects were assessed and prioritized for funding consideration based on factors such as legal, regulatory, statutory, and statutory requirement, criticality of the need, health and safety risk to the community or employees, public benefit, revenue generation, or potential to reduce operating costs. The first two items are requested by the school and are for continuation of previously approved leases for buses and computers. The third item is for previously approved lease of police cruisers. Item four, crosswalk signals are for installation of active technology crosswalk signals adjacent to and on roads leading to Millis Public Schools at existing crosswalks. The signals will replace crossing guards which have been difficult to hire and are costly to fund. There is anticipated operating budget, budget reduction resulting from this project. Item five, drinking water risk resilient assessment is required per state regulation. This item is funded from the enterprise, excuse me, the Water Enterprise Fund. Item six is the first of a multi-year, long-term management and service contract to maintain the town's water tanks. Item seven is for DPW communication devices. The devices proposed for purchase will correct a deficiency where DPW workers are having to use their personal communications devices to communicate intra and interdepartmentally while on Town of Millis official business. The new devices will also be compatible with devices currently operated by the Fire and Police Departments. The Finance Committee recommends approval of this article.
Any further discussion of Article Nine? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Berube.
I moved at the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $23,300 for the first year payment of a new lease and purchase for computers for the Millis Schools.
Second.
Article Ten has been moved and seconded as presented. Further discussion?
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Berube.
This article, if approved, would provide authority for Millis Public Schools to enter into a new multi-year lease for computers. The Finance Committee recommends approval of this article.
Any further discussion?
Sarah Lang, Windcrest Lane. What is the benefit of a lease versus a purchase of these computers?
Mr. Berube.
Madam Moderator, I would definitely defer to the School Department, but ideally, it's, the cost is spread out over three years in, in general, for the lease.
And at that point, we own the computers?
Yes.
After the three years? What is the replacement rate of those computers?
Madam Moderator, I'd definitely defer to the School Department for that.
Is there anybody here from the School Department to speak to this?
Hi, Mark Conroy, 12 Rosenfeld Road, also a member of the School Committee. So we lease our computers basically with a dollar buyback at the end to allow us to keep-
Excuse me, can you please speak directly into the microphone?
Sorry. We use the lease because they're cheaper than buying full products at the time, so we buy them, pay them over three years. But also, we do get a dollar buyout at the end of the lease, so we can keep them until their useful life, which is usually around four or five years. And what we've also been able to do is transition from different types of products, such as a few years ago iPads, to Chromebooks, depending on which is best for the education at the time.
Any further discussion on the motion? This does require a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of Article Ten, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Schultz.
There you go. All right. I move that the town appropriate $135,887.97, representing unexpended money appropriated under Article Nine of the Warrant of November 5th, 2012 Town Meeting, to finance DPW HVAC repairs in the amount of $6,943.85. Article Twenty-four of the Warrant of November 2nd, 2015 Town Meeting, to finance DPW roof repairs in the amount of $6,471.40. And Article Thirty of the Warrant of May 9th, 2016 Town Meeting, to finance DPW garage repairs in the amount of $122,472.72, to instead pay a portion of the increased cost of the DPW facility construction, renovation, and remodeling project under Article Thirteen of the Warrant of May 13th, 2019 Town Meeting, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, as permitted by Chapter Forty, Section Twenty of the General Laws. So the, the total amount appropriated to pay for such projects is increased to $4,035,887.97 from the original $3,900,000, which was appropriated under said Article Thirteen.
Second.
Discussion?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Schultz.
As you can tell, we've been trying to fix the DPW building for quite a long time. Going back to FY, the, the November of 2012, we started appropriating money to fix the roof, the HVAC system, HVAC system, and other parts of the building. Finally, in, in May of last year, we voted $3.9 million to repair and renovate and replace large portions of the building. This is a major capital project that, that passed last year. This will take $135,000 that we had put aside for Band-Aid repairs and put it towards the final project. The project is coming in close to budget, but we would be more comfortable having a contingency amount, that if we do not spend, it will not be spent, if we don't need, it won't be spent, and it will be turned to voters, just as we return this money on this article to the project. Again, all these articles have been passed in previous town meetings to benefit the DPW. This will just put it all towards the final, best solution to the project we have, which is to renovate and rebuild the project as presented last year in a, when it passed.
Any further discussion of Article Eleven?
Hello, this is Mike McPollin, 117 Forest Road, Millis, Mass. I, I thought we already paid for this in the last election, you know, town meeting. We, we're already paid for the restoration of the DPW station, so I'm, I'm not sure what we're doing here. Did we already appropriate funds enough to take care of that? Or are we just gonna, you know, keep taxing us?
Mr. Schultz.
I'm not sure.
Yeah, Madam Moderator, we appropriated $3.9 million based on a conceptual plan. As the final plan was designed and built and went out for bid, we realized we do not have enough for a comfortable contingency, and we don't want to have to go out and, and find out we don't have enough money to finish the project. Should these funds not be needed, as we get into the project, they will be reapplied and sent to another project. None of this is being paid through by a tax increase. There was no tax increase associated with the DPW project when it was voted last year. It was all coming out of normal debt service, the Enterprise, and the Enterprise Fund. So while we are close, the $3.9 million estimate we had when we started the project was a little low from what we're finding out the actual bids that have hit the street are coming in. We believe we're close. We think this $135,000 that we had set aside for renovation projects in the past would give us enough so that we don't have to worry about getting into the project, not being able to finish, stop work, and come back to town meeting after we have stopped the project to get the final $100,000 if needed to finish the project.
Thank you for the explanation, but in general, I don't understand. I come to these town meetings for the last 20 years, I've been coming to the town meetings, and every time, we have to reinvest, reinvest. It doesn't make sense what's going on with the DPW.
Sir, please direct your question to the article, your comments to the article.
Okay. You, you've answered my question, so I'll, I'll disregard the last question. But I don't understand why we're looking for more money, when we already appropriated money last year to fund the DPW reconstruction. That's my point, and I'll step away.
Any further discussion on Article Eleven?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Cantor Egy.
It's Cantor Egy.
I'm sorry. Excuse me.
As a fan of Public Works, I would like to commend the town on this particular project because we rehabbed the building without an override. So I think the Finance Committee did a great job with that. It's not a direct thing. I think it was actually, we kicked the can down the road on so many projects in town for 15 years, and this one actually came in and we didn't have an override for. So I think the town did a good job funding it, and I support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article Eleven? This article does need a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries unanimously.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Schultz.
Got to find my notes, bear with me. I move that the town vote, in accordance with General Law Forty, Section 62 to 69, to authorize the Select Board to enter into a contract of up to 20 years for the purpose of inspecting, maintaining, repairing, modifying, and providing asset management services for the town's water tanks on Farm Street and Walnut Street, on terms and conditions the Board deems in the best interest of the town.
Second.
Discussion?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Schultz.
This article will allow the Selectmen, as it says, to enter into negotiations on a, on a maintenance of our water tanks. The company that we select will do all of the maintenance for the next 15 years. It authorizes them to go up to 20, but I think the plan is to go 15, if I'm correct. And an estimated cost on that will be $1.6 million over the 15 years, which is far cheaper than building a new water tank or fixing things as they break. Basically, after we enter into this contract, we will not be subject to any cost associated with the tank, short of an act of God. Any routine maintenance on the tank, any painting, any cleaning, any hatchwork, any of the other work that goes on in a water tank, and I know those items because I heard them, I have no real idea what most of the other work involved is, but this would take care of it all for a flat fee each year, eliminating any budget surprises and the need to hit stabilization or go for an override to fund this. It'll also keep our tanks serviceable for at least the next 15 years.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article Twelve? This does require, oh, sorry, excuse me?
Stanja Blonsky, Glen Allen Boulevard. This sounds like a good category to kick the can down the road, much like we kick the tree, take down, down the road. I don't see any urgency on this one. We have a very tight budget going in. We may not even be able to afford this in consideration to all the other expenses or lack of revenue. So I vote no, and I encourage the other taxpayers to vote no. We can always do this later.
Any further discussion?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Schultz.
Yeah, the issue we have with this versus the trees, and I do see the, the similarities, I do understand what you're saying, but with this situation, those tanks are quite old as they are, they need quite a bit of work now to be serviceable. I'm sure Mr. McKay can explain the immediate cost we'd be facing just to keep them running. This will move those costs into a unified fixed 15-year contract, instead of having other costs pop up as they need. And if Mr. McKay needs to give examples of the cost we will be facing next year with or without this, I'm sure he can give some examples.
Sorry, sir? Sir?
Madam Moderator. I think it needs to be clarified, I believe the funding for this comes out of the Enterprise Fund, it does not come out of the General Operating Fund, so it's not a tax, it's a utility.
I didn't hear any of that, I'm sorry.
I believe that the payments for this will be coming out of the Enterprise Fund, not out of the General Fund, so it's not a tax.
Thank you.
It's a fee that users pay.
Yeah, Madam Moderator.
Mr. Schultz.
Excellent point, thank you. That was in the notes, but I skipped over it. This is not part of a tax increase at all, it's not part of our operating fund, unlike the other articles we've discussed. This is coming straight out of that water users fee, and, and there is a surplus in that account now, so this, so these funds are available and needed.
Any further discussion of Article Twelve? Sir? Sir, please, are, are you getting up to speak, sir?
Kim Taywan, 27 Cottage. My question is, what is the current annual cost for maintenance and inspection, repairs, modification, et cetera? And what is the projected cost over for next 15, 20 years that this contract we're looking at?
I'm going to, I'll-
Excuse me, Mr. McKay, our DPW is going to address that for you.
Thank you, Madam, Madam Moderator. So I believe the article that we're voting on now is that to, we've already approved the funding for this article. We're, all we're looking for now is for the Selectmen to sign the contract for the funding of the article that we've already previously stated. The, well, Farm Street Tank was painted two years ago at 1. something, 1.3 million dollars. The Walnut Street Tank was looked at, it was going to be, in its progression, was going to be painted this year, actually, last year, for another 1. something million dollars. After an inspection with Suez, the company that we're hopefully going to contract with after the RFP and the contract was out to bid, they came in and they inspected it and they found that there was no need to paint the Walnut Street Tank at this time. And in part of that 1.6 million, it will take care of both tanks being painted over the next 15 years. Both of them are well over 50-plus years, both tanks are. They're both riveted tanks, and they're both in excellent condition. There's no need to kick the can down the road of taking them down and rebuilding the Walnut, either, either tank. That's the assessment that we have. They're taking a big risk of, of man, taking on this project for 15 years to maintain them, and as Mr. Schultz stated, that they own every, every aspect of repairing these tanks. There's a list, and again, it was, it's publicized, it's on the website, it's on the DPW website, of what repairs are going to be immediately taken care of. And they're upwards, in the first year, the $199,000, they're broken down into two different costs, one for the Farm Street and one for the Walnut Street Tanks. Most of them are safety issues. One, they have to, the stairs going up to the tank have to be replaced, the hatches both have to be replaced. They're going to put a circulating pump in the Walnut Street Tank, where we don't have one now, and they're going to replace the circulator in the Farm Street Tank. That's going to be done in the first year.
Thank you. Further discussion of Article Twelve?
Hello, Lady Monteria, Art Curly, 148 Glen Allen Boulevard. I'm a little confused, are these-
Sir, I'm having a very hard time hearing you.
Okay, I'll, I'll speak up. Are you saying these are just cost overruns from previous line items? Are you saying these are things that we have to do, brand-new, brand-new contracts?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Schultz.
These, we, these, there's no cost overrun, there's no cost overruns associated with this. This is a new contract to provide 15 years of maintenance on the water tank that will be paid for out of water user fees. This doesn't relate to any overruns or anything else related to that at all.
So work has not begun?
Work has been done every year since those tanks went up at some level.
No, 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 I'm saying, work has not begun on your line item.
Excuse me, please direct your questions through the moderator.
The moderator. You're asking for money, all I'm asking you is work, has work begun on what you are asking for? Are there actuals?
Mr. McKay?
Yeah.
Sir, please step away from the microphone so the DPW Director can-
Yeah, Madam Moderator, the, the simple answer is, no work has begun because no contract's been entered into. Nobody's done anything yet with this project, and if we don't, we're going to own having to fix it and finding, maintain it for the next 15 years.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Any further discussion of Article Twelve?
Mike McPollin, 117 Forest Road, Millis, Mass. I don't understand why we spent 1.3 billion to paint that tank, now we want to just let somebody take care of it? That was two years ago. May, maybe three. But it's a lot of money that we paid, and now we're just going to walk away and let somebody else come in and service it? Doesn't make sense. It's not prudent in terms of fiscal responsibility. Doesn't make sense.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Schultz.
I would propose if we hadn't painted that tank, this would be a $2.9 million contract, not a 1.6 million contract, because they, that was in dire need of repair and painting. This is fiscally prudent because it eliminates all risk associated with the town on maintaining those tanks. If something is found tomorrow that is broken, they, well, not tomorrow-
Sir, please do not throw the microphone until you recognize-
Yeah, the day after we finish the contract or sign the contract, they own all risk associated with that contract, with those tanks. It removes all the risk from the town side. It will certainly cost us more over the next 15 years, even if we just look at painting the tank that we haven't done. Sometime between now and 15 years from now, it's going to need to be painted, and that cost alone is going to be 1.3 million dollars, if we were to hire a contractor to do that work, because we don't paint those tanks ourselves.
Any further discussion of Article Twelve? This does require a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, please say aye.
Aye.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Power.
I move that the town vote to appropriate a sum of $600 from the Community Preservation Historic Resource Reserve Fund, Reserve Fund, for the preservation and rehabilitation of the Henry F. Walling map.
Second.
Okay. The Millis Planning Board at public meetings held Thursday, November 7, 2019, and March 5, 2020, at the Veterans Memorial Building, Room 130 and 104, voted unanimously to approve this article, to approve this article as written. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm going to repeat that. The Millis Planning Board at public meetings held Thursday, November 7, 2019, and March 5, 2020, at the Veterans Memorial Building, Room 130 and 104, voted unanimously to approve this article as written. Further discussion?
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Power.
This article would approve the allocation of $600 for Phase 1 restoration of the Henry F. Walling map preservation project. The map was gifted to the town in 1852, and these funds will allow the town to stabilize and repair the map with the ultimate goal of displaying the piece in the local history, local history map of the library. These funds would be appropriated from the Historic Resource Reserve. The Finance Committee recommends approval of this article.
Okay, Article 13 has been moved, seconded. Further discussion, Mr. Baker?
David Baker, Two Holbrook Way, a member of the Community Preservation Act Committee. Correction, I think those meetings you're referencing were CPA meetings and not planning board. I was, I was there.
Thank you for that correction.
Lisa Hart, 56 Walnut Street. I just have a question. It was stated it was gifted to the town in 1852, but the town wasn't created until 1885.
Please state your name and your address.
Wendy Berry, 6 Paddock Lane. I am a member of the Community Preservation Committee and also a library trustee. The map was dated 1852. It was gifted a year ago from the Gittens, Nancy Gittens, to the, she found it in her attic, and it belonged to one of her ancestors who worked for Medway, which we were part of at that point.
Any further discussion of Article 13? All those in favor of Article 13, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Power.
I move that the town vote to appropriate a sum of $74,558.49 from the Community Preservation Fund Open Space Reserve and/or the Community Preservation Fund Budgeted Reserve and/or the Undesignated Fund for the Memorial Fields Improvement Projects, or take any other action in relation thereto.
Second.
The Millis Planning, excuse me.
Read the motion, not the article.
I move that the town vote to appropriate a sum of, just read his money, sum of money from the Community Preservation Fund Open Space Reserve and/or the Community Preservation Fund Budgeted Reserve. Oh, right here, the bottom part there. Yep, thank you. All right, try number three. I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $74,558.49 from the Community Preservation Fund Open Space Reserve for the Memorial Fields Improvement Project.
Second.
The Millis Planning Board at a remote public meeting held on Thursday, May 4, 2020 via Zoom platform ID number 846-3283-8537, voted unanimously to recommend approval of this article as written for the Memorial Fields Improvement Project. Discussion.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Power.
This article would approve the allocation of $74,558.49 for the Memorial Field Improvement Project. These much-needed improvements would greatly improve the field's playing opportunities and increase safety. These funds would be appropriated from the Community Preservation Open Space and Recreation Resources. The Finance Committee recommends approval of this article.
Further discussion?
Nicole Riley, 258 Village Street, member of the Millis Planning Board. Just for point of clarification, this was never, there was a discussion before the, in 2019, with regards to some funds being used for the repair of the Millis Fields, but as noted in the May meeting, that was not discussed at Planning Board.
Excuse me, there's another error in the article. This was the Community Preservation, not the Planning Board. I apologize for these mistypes in the information presented. So any further discussion? So this is a Community Preservation Board action, not a Planning Board action. Any further discussion of Article 14? All those in favor of Article 14, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passage unanimously. Mr. Riley.
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $15,600 for fiscal year 2021 personal property interim year inspections and real estate interim year revaluations.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Article 15 is presented. Discussion.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Riley.
These evaluations and assessments allow the town to create the bills to go out for real estate and personal property taxes?
Any further discussion of Article 15? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Article passes unanimously.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Riley.
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $5,000 for Medicare, Medicaid reimbursement services.
Second.
It's been, Article 16 has been moved and seconded as presented. Discussion.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Riley.
This is an annual article where we contract with a third party to do the legwork to make sure that we maximize our reimbursement from Medicare and Medicaid. It's generally believed to be very well worth the $5,000 as we recover significantly more than we would otherwise.
Any further discussion on Article 16? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries unanimously. Mr. Berube.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $13,566 and transfer from free cash the sum of $61,434 for a total sum of $75,000 for the Unemployment Insurance Fund.
Second.
Article 17 has been moved and seconded. Discussion.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Berube.
This article, if approved, adds resources to the Unemployment Insurance Fund. The total cost to be funded is $75,000. The Finance Committee recommends approval of this article.
Any further discussion of Article 17?
Madam Moderator. We talk about free cash from 2020 or 2021?
Mr. McCashen.
It's free cash from fiscal year 20.
You need to speak up. We can't hear you, unfortunately.
It's fiscal year 20. Fiscal year 21, we don't have yet. We don't have it certified.
I, that's what I assume. So the question, have we spent all our free cash from 2020?
Hi, Carol Johnston, the Finance Director. The free cash that we had was certified as of July 1, 2019. All of that money, as of this meeting, has been spent, which it needs to be in order to end the fiscal year. The new free cash will not be certified for 2020 until probably October, and then we'll know what our free cash is in FY 20, for our use in FY 21.
Ms. Moore, thank you. I was hoping there was leftover 220 money for trees. That's all.
Any further discussion of Article 17? All those in favor of Article 17, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries unanimously. It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn the meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned.